Good afternoon. I'm Tim Goddard, your town moderator, and I'm here with interim town administrator, Joseph Leighton. And we're going to provide a preview of the special town meeting that's scheduled for Saturday, October 17th at 9:00 a.m. at Alumni Field. And the rain date would be the following date, October 18th, but it's not going to rain. So we're planning on a town meeting on Saturday, October 17th, outdoors again. If you were there in June, it was very hot, but it seemed to go very well. And a lot of the same precautions obviously being taken during the pandemic and check-in. I think, Joe, does that start at eight or 8:30? But it's probably a good idea to get there early. The check-in's a little longer than usual, but necessary under the circumstances.
Correct, Tim. The check-in is at 8 o'clock.
Okay, very good, very good. So when you get to town meeting, you should have a copy of your town meeting report that you've received in the mail, which has information on all of the articles and recommendations made by various boards and so forth. So you should definitely bring a copy of this report and also bring a face mask. Should have mentioned that at the top, that we do require you to wear a face mask whenever you're moving around at Alumni Field. If you're going to your seat or from your seat to the microphone, we allow speakers to take off their mask when they're at the microphone. But otherwise, you know, observe the protocols we all become quite accustomed to. But you know, if you haven't read the town meeting report, this is something that the town went to a few years ago, and we've heard nothing but good things about it. There's a lot of information in there that I think answers, quite frankly, a lot of questions that would be asked at town meeting. So we think it moves things along because there's a lot of, you know, concise explanations in plain English and takes a little of the mystery out of what we're trying to do at town meeting. So please bring that with you on Saturday, October 17th. Check-in starting at 8 o'clock. And we're going to start promptly at 9:00 a.m. And we'll go as long as we have to. But I, you know, I imagine that with 20 or so articles, I guess it's 20 exactly. Well, we'll be done in an hour or two, but we'll take as long as we need to take. It'll be quite a bit cooler, but we'll see how things go. Procedures for this town meeting. Article proponents can take up to 10 minutes to do a presentation. And presentations in opposition, the same amount of time. However, that is for an organized presentation. Someone needs to clear that with me in advance. Otherwise, speakers, after the main motion is made and the presentation is made, will be limited to two minutes per speaker. And again, we ask that people speak only once per article unless there's new information or they've got a question or something significant. But you know, we ask that in fairness, you know, you let other people speak. We know that there are frequent flyers at town meeting that like to address every article, and that's their right as a voter. But we just ask that you speak just once per article. We're going to go with the, what we call the call of the articles procedure. Again, we found that this can speed up the process. The moderator will call out the articles in sequence. And anyone that wants to debate an article needs to, or should raise their hand or call it hold or, you know, somehow indicate they want to hold on a certain item. We go through the entire list of the articles. And all of the articles that were not held are passed as a group by one unanimous vote. Generally, those would be the non-controversial articles, the sort of mandatory, perfunctory, mundane things that we have to do to conduct the business of the town. They're not necessarily controversial. So we try to deal with those as a group and save time for the articles that people do want to debate and do want to talk about. And as always, you know, no one should feel shy if they've got a question to put a hold on an article. And it's really no, makes no difference to any of us. But if we can deal with some of the articles in that fashion, all the more time for, you know, I guess I wanted to say the more important articles, but certainly the articles that generate more interest, we'd have more time for that. So starting at 9:00 a.m., we'll do that call of the articles. And we'll see, you know, how many articles we can handle in that fashion. And then we'll go back to the beginning and in normal sequence, go through the articles that weren't held. And, you know, and sometimes that's still a lot of articles and sometimes there are very few remaining. We've got a total of 20. And, you know, I, you know, if I had to guess, I'd say that, you know, maybe or about half of the articles that could be dealt with that way. But it's not up to me, it's up to the voters. So we'll see how that goes. Why don't we turn to the list of the articles? If we could, and you can see what they are. And as I said, there are 20 articles and some of them you recognize from years past. Bills of prior years is something that comes up quite often. Not very controversial, that's something we probably can deal with in that fashion. And right on through the list. So I guess, but maybe we'll just, you know, start with the beginning of the warrant. We see the articles 13 through 20 now on the screen. Number of Light and Water Department articles this year. But let's, let's, let's start with, start at the beginning. Let's start with articles one and two. And Joe, if you could just kind of give us, give us a brief explanation, if you, if you would, on the, you know, the first two, bills of prior years and then amendment to the budget article that doesn't really just move some money around. But I think people might appreciate an explanation. So if you would, Joe.
Sure thing. Thanks, Tim. So for article number one, this is a rather administrative article. Sometimes when we close the books on the prior fiscal year, there's a couple of bills that come in after. And in this case, we have a few bills that need to be paid. So we're looking for authorization to pay bills that came in from fiscal year 20, which had ended on June 30th. The warrant report has a list of those, those prior year bills as part of the motion. So that'll be something that will be taken care of in article one. Article two is to make amendments to FY 2021 operating budget. For those of you who had been in attendance for the annual town meeting in June, because we're in the middle of dealing with a pandemic, the Finance Committee and Select Board did take a rather conservative view towards funding town operations. And there was some small requests that were held over from June Town Meeting to Special Town Meeting, so we can make sure that we had an understanding as far as what the town's finances look like. Within the town meeting report, there are proposed adjustments. That includes some relatively minor changes to the department's, specifically town clerk elections, elder and human services, as well as the municipal building committee for some rather minor changes in administrative support. Also included in that article is transfer in from bond premium to debt service. So these are some minor changes to FY 21 budget. It should be noted that it actually does reflect a overall decrease in the overall operating budget for the, for the town compared to what was approved back at annual town meeting in June.
Okay, very good. Let's move to article three, some additional capital items that are being funded from available funds. Joe?
Thanks. So article three, there's basically three things that we're looking at funding from capital items, looking for funding. The first is a Mack roll-off truck. The second is to fund traffic signal improvements at the high school entrance at King Street. And the third is to make some repairs to the police station. Funding sources from these come from surplus from snow and ice and also then from capital stabilization. These are specifically the traffic signal improvements is something that's been looked at by the town for the last couple of years with funding from previous town meetings. The Mack roll-off truck is part of DPW's plan to cost-save as far as some of the hauling, hauling costs for transfer station. And by owning our own truck, we're able to recover those costs fairly quickly and save the town money in the long term. And second, and the last one is that with the police station, there's some exterior repairs that are needed. And this article will fund those repairs.
Okay, I know, I know for sure, just to, before we move on, someone is going to stand up and say, "We just built the police station." What do you mean repairs? So I guess someone ought to be prepared to address what those repairs are and why they're necessary, is all I'm suggesting.
Yes, I'm sure someone will be available to answer that question.
Okay, thank you. Article four?
So article four is to use some of the receipts reserved for appropriation from the Public Education Government access. These are related to a charge that's on everyone's cable bill that then cover the cost of some capital improvements that LCTV may undertake. One of the, what, what's going to happen with this $50,000 that's being requested to be transferred is that $40,000 is going to be allocated to do audio and video equipment purchase and installation at the library that's under construction. And 10,000 of that 50 is going to be used to, for cost association with negotiating the new cable franchise licenses. Those periodically come up every 10 years. And those license negotiations are going to be coming up shortly.
Okay, I think the good thing to remember here is that the funds that accumulate for everyone's cable bill goes into a special revenue fund with the town. But the town can't spend those funds without a town meeting vote to transfer them out. So in the interest of transparency, the town meeting always has the opportunity to see how those funds will be spent before they are transferred out. Moving on to article five, Mill Pond dredging rescind vote and transfer of funds. Joe?
Hey, thanks. So back in May 2018, Annual Town Meeting had transferred over $68,000 from the Spectacle Pond Cell Tower Clean Lakes Fund to be used as part of a feasibility study that was being undertaken with the Army Corps of Engineers for Spectacle Pond, sorry, for Mill Pond. That report or that transfer of funds represented the town's share of that feasibility study. What ended up happening was the Army Corps ended up funding that study 100%. So there was not the need for a town match. This article will take that money that was appropriated for the study itself and put it back into that Clean Lakes Fund to then be re-appropriated at a future town meeting. When, when this was reviewed, one of the questions that, that came up was, how, how does this actually impact? And does it actually rescind authorization to do actual dredging at Mill Pond? This was only connected to the preparation of the feasibility study. That work will occur once the feasibility study is completed. And these funds then would be available for that work to actually occur.
Very good. Shouldn't be very controversial, I wouldn't think. Moving on, article six, appropriation of bond premium. Can you explain this, Joe?
Sure. So one of the things is that when we do go out and we bond projects, there's money that sometimes comes back on the premiums. What the town does is then take those funds coming back and pay it towards the cost of projects. So specifically, this article will assist in paying down appropriately in the amount of $8,785.06 to pay down library construction and $2,772.33 to pay down the Whitcomb Ave Wellfield project. So this article just takes that premium and allocates it so we can pay down the cost of those projects.
Very good, very good. Article seven, I see the Community Preservation Committee's recommending a single project this town meeting?
Yes, correct, Tim. So for this town meeting, they are looking to utilize $9,500 from the Historic Preservation Reserve Fund to rehab the 1912 Grange Fountain at the depot. This is in front of the depot at 3 Taylor Street. That fountain is currently in a condition where there's rust that's starting to build up that needs to be rehabbed and fixed so that it can be a future reminder of the history of Lilton for generations to come.
Very good, very good. I'd say the first several articles that you've described are not necessarily that controversial and might be candidates for the consent calendar procedure voting as a bundle. However, coming to article eight, the acquisition, potential acquisition of land, 1919 Tohadoon Road. I know that the town meeting is going to want to debate this one. So why don't you explain what the town's trying to do here, Joe?
Sure, thanks. So the Select Board has been negotiating with the property owners of 119 Tohadoon for over a year now. This is a very important property. It's on the end of Long Lake. It connects to not only other open spaces, so that's owned by the town, but also additional wetland resource areas. And it's very important from a water quality standpoint for the town. In working with many departments and entities on the acquisition, the town was successful in receiving a $7,600, sorry, $763,000 grant through the state's Municipal Vulnerability Program to assist in the acquisition and cleanup of the site. We're also going to be utilizing funds from the Community Preservation Committee, Affordable Housing and Conservation Commission to acquire as well as divide off a parcel for affordable housing purposes and to also mediate the site. Not only is there an existing structure, but there are some invasive species also on the property. So this MVP grant proposed the acquisition and also cleanup of the site. And these other funds are all being bundled together to assist in this acquisition.
Okay, I know we'll have a considerable debate on this, I'm sure. There's a lot of interest in this particular article. We'll see how that goes. Moving on to article nine, you've got the number of adjustments and amendments to the personnel bylaw, the compensation and classification plan. It looks like an awful lot of changes, Joe, but I think a lot of it seems to be reorganization and adding definitions and so forth. But why don't you explain what the Personnel Board and the town are trying to do here?
Sure, Tim. And you are right. While it may take up a few pages in the Special Town Meeting Report, I think people will see that they're rather straightforward. So for example, one of the changes ends up being, being more specific as far as what is considered holiday pay and how it's calculated to make sure that it's in line with, with how the town currently practices that. Second change is to also make sure that we are adding a new position of Human Resource Manager. This was funded through Annual Town Meeting in June. And we need to add that as a position within the personnel bylaw. We're also amending the two positions of Treasurer and the Assistant Treasurer by striking the HR Administrator from the Assistant Treasurer's title and also adding to the Treasurer's position the Assistant Finance Director title. So these three changes are being made to the positions list. And then the last item ends up being that for some of the pay schedules, we are making some adjustments to some of the entry level grades to start to work towards implementing minimum wage. So over the next couple of town meetings, people in tents will see that we're slowly raising these up to meet minimum wage requirements. That's so that we can make sure that we are complying with minimum wage requirements in a thoughtful manner while not causing too much of an impact to town finances.
Okay, very good. Moving on, we get the first of a number of articles that the Water Department's involved in. Joe, why don't you explain what, what this article would authorize?
Sure. So one, I'd like to, to be able to drop a plug for the Watson Drops video series that the Water Department in Lilton, Electric and Light Water Department have been producing with, along with LCTV for the sewer project as well as for water system improvements. Their most recent presentation actually went into this article a little bit deeper and encouraged people to watch the most recent video to learn more about improvements that are needed to address PFAS. Specifically, this article is going to allow the Water Department to borrow an additional amount not to exceed $17 million to be paid by the water rate users to implement improvements to their water treatment facility at Whitcomb Ave. This will allow for the treatment of water coming from Whitcomb Ave as well as Spectacle Pond to remove PFAS. This is a challenge that the state, as well as the nation, is starting to deal with as far as removing this contaminant from, from water. And this falls on the prior approval of 13 million that was done at a previous town meeting. So between those two funds, we'll be able to undertake the improvements to the treatment facility.
Okay, moving on to article 11. What is this involved, Joe?
So article 11, the Lilton Smart Sewer Design Construction Funding. I also would encourage people to watch that Watson Drops video. It goes into a lot more, more depth as far as that project. So one of the things that this, this specific article is going to do is allow for borrowing of $2.5 million. 1.5 will be paid through an existing Mass Works grant that the town did receive from the state. And that's going to construct a 175-gallon per day sewer discharge site at the Lilton High School. This is part of the town's ongoing work to implement the Smart Sewer Project and provide expanded sewer opportunities to support existing users and businesses and residents within the town, but then also to expand economic development opportunities and improvements that are recommended within the town's master plan as most recently also referenced when we approved the zoning change at Annual Town Meeting for higher density within the common area through the Form Base Code amendments that Town Meeting approved.
Okay, we'll move on to article 12. This would authorize a home rule petition.
So this, so Tim, this may seem a little repetitive. People may remember that a couple town meetings ago, we actually had done the same thing. The home rule petition to establish the Lilton Commons Smart Sewer Division. That's something that because we're coming down to the wire for the legislative season, if for some reason the legislation does not get finalized and approved and signed, this home rule petition would allow for us to then resubmit in a very quick and timely fashion, rather than waiting for Annual Town Meeting in May or whenever we have that Annual Town Meeting next year, to then authorize that home rule petition again. So this is belt and suspenders. Hopefully, as we come into town meeting, we may just be passing over this article. We are currently working with our legislative delegation as well as the governor's office to make sure that it is finalized and signed by the governor.
So I think bills can be refilled in January, is that correct?
Correct.
So save yourself a number of months if it were necessary. But it may not be necessary, is what you're saying.
Correct.
Okay, and we'll know, you think we'll know by then?
Yes, we will. I'm in communication with both the governor's office and our legislative delegation to make sure that this finalizes. And they are aware of our, our Special Town Meeting on Saturday.
Okay, very good. Article 13, this again has to do with the Water Department's Whitcomb Ave property?
Yep. So sort of the same thing, you know, belt and suspenders. And that if, if for some reason it doesn't make it through the legislative session we're currently in, this will allow us to refile as expeditiously as possible. And our hope is that maybe one won't need it. But this, even if we authorized and it went through, it doesn't hurt us. If, if the legislation does not go through, this will allow us to file that home rule petition as soon as possible.
Okay, and as, as with the other articles, there are no, no changes to what was previously voted by town meeting, correct?
Correct.
So they might both be candidates for an early passage under that theory, but we'll see, we'll see. Okay, we'll move on to article 14. And this would amend a number of votes from prior years. Could you explain what's happening here, Joe?
Sure. So it, article 14 is essentially just amending prior year borrowing authorizations from May 2018 and October 2019 to allow the Water Department to borrow these funds from the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust. This would allow us to borrow at 0%. So while it is possible for us to borrow for projects at a very low interest rate, it's hard to get zero or lower than zero, so.
Hard to get better than zero, right?
Right. So this will just give us more flexibility to make sure that we are saving the town as much money as possible in our borrowing.
Yeah. So once again, town meeting has acted on these previously. And this is really kind of an administrative change so we can borrow at a lower rate and save the taxpayers' money. Very good. All right, we'll move on to article 15. Looks like we're going to buy an ambulance, is that correct?
Correct. So at Annual Town Meeting, there was a article that approved $100,000 towards the purchase of a ambulance. This article is utilizing that $100,000 and then asking to borrow $225,000 to purchase that ambulance. The reason for the purchases that currently we have to, if there's something that happens once deployed, once being repaired, we don't have any coverage. So this third ambulance will not only allow us to take one of our older ambulances and put it on reserve, but then also, as is often necessary, sometimes the ambulances need to be serviced, they need to go out for repair. This will allow us to always have one in reserve to make sure that we are serving the needs of the community.
Okay, so the total estimated cost then is the 100 plus the 225?
Correct. Total estimated cost would be about $325,000.
Okay, very good. Pretty straightforward. We'll move on to article 16. This is general and zoning bylaw amendments regarding some new technologies. And just a reminder to folks that general bylaw general bylaw amendments are a majority vote and, uh, zoning amendments are two-thirds vote. Take it away, Joe.
Okay, thanks, Tim. So Article 16, um, as cellular technology continues to change, uh, many of the carriers are starting to deploy, uh, 5G technology. Uh, this, uh, can often be different than the traditional cell towers, um, and, uh, can result in, uh, different deployments of, of cell, uh, antenna and equipment. So these amendments basically are going to allow the town, uh, through the Planning Board as well as through, uh, the Select Board to approve, uh, fu- the deployment and rollout of 5G technology that may occur within town. The reason why I said Select Board is that, um, uh, there are some instances where 5G is being deployed on, uh, within rights of way, uh, for town rights of way on utility poles. Uh, and, uh, that would allow for the town, uh, through the Select Board and, um, their establishment of rules and regulations to, uh, govern how those then are, uh, able to occur. Uh, private property, then the Planning Board, uh, process for, uh, uh, approving cellular, uh, uh, applications, uh, would occur.
Okay, very good. We'll move on to, uh, Article 17, Dog Leash Bylaw Amendments. I don't, don't, I hesitate to ask whether this might be controversial, but, uh, sometimes dogs are very controversial. Is, is that the case, uh, here, Joe, or?
Uh, hopefully that, um, won't be the case, uh, but I, I agree with your assessment. Very often, uh, dog bylaws can get, uh, a lot of attention. Um, the purpose of these amendments is try, is to try to provide a little extra clarity as far as what, um, it means to have dogs that are under control and, and, uh, what that, what that then means, um, especially on some of our properties. Uh, so, uh, looking at the Town Meeting Report, you'll see a lot of existing language, um, uh, within a specific section that then proposes, uh, changes that then, uh, talk about, uh, controlling the dog that, that they, uh, how they must be, um, on leash, uh, and if off-leash at a heel position, um, and must be, uh, within 25 feet of other residents or dogs. There then is also a new section that's being added, uh, that again talks about, um, care and custody of dogs, um, uh, on leash or on a lead, uh, talking about, uh, picking up, uh, waste, uh, from dogs, uh, and then also making sure that there's other things, um, on the town property. So if you take a dog onto town property, um, what not, what, what needs to be met. And that includes that they must be licensed and tagged, um, that they must be under the care, um, patrol of the person, no more than three dogs at a time on conservation land. Uh, so a lot of this was in, in reaction to comments and, and, uh, concerns that were expressed to the Select Board. Uh, it's the hope that these will address some of those, uh, concerns that have been, uh, raised over the last couple of years.
Okay, very good. We move then to Article 18, which is a number of, uh, road acceptances. And just to remind folks that, uh, when the town accepts a private way as a townway, we, uh, commit to the, the repair, maintenance, snow plowing of that, uh, road from that point forward. So the town accepts a responsibility for those roadways uh, when Town Meeting, uh, accepts them as townways. So in Article 18, uh, it looks like we've got, uh, quite a few, uh, here, Joe, is that correct?
Uh, yes, Tim. We have, uh, roads within four developments. Uh, so we've been working with not only these developers, but then also the Planning Board, their engineering consultant and our TPW and Water Departments to, uh, make sure that they're going to be an acceptable, uh, condition to, um, be accepted as town roads. Uh, those roads I have listed on this slide are from the Bennett Orchard, uh, subdivision, the Chestnut Lane subdivision, uh, the Cooper Farms Estates subdivision, as well as the Durkey Estates and, and K Estates, uh, subdivisions. Uh, the, the, the Select Board and the, and the report, uh, hadn't prepared its, uh, motion at that time. We're finalizing our, uh, motions for these on, uh, Tuesday, uh, March 13th, uh, so that we can, uh, provide them to Town Meeting.
Okay. Very good. We'll move on to Article 19, which involves a donation of land from the Durkey Farm Estates. Uh, can you explain this, uh, to us, Joe, and, and maybe talk a little bit about the, if there, to the extent there might be plans already for some of this land, what they may be?
Uh, sure, thank you. So, um, having a list of parcels, uh, and their acreage really doesn't help very much. Uh, so we do have a plan that at least, uh, people can, can take a look at. It is in the Special Town Meeting Report. Uh, so, uh, specifically looking at, uh, the plan that's on the, on the screen, uh, you have some parcels that are going to be open space, some that are also going to be used for conservation. So Parcell A and B shall be used, uh, for open space purposes. Parcell C, D, and E, uh, shall be used for conservation and recreation purposes. Uh, so at least those will be available at, at some future for date. Uh, as part of the Planning Board's approval of this development, it did require, uh, these open space areas.
Okay. Good. And then we've got, uh, similarly, a, a donation of land for the, uh, K Estates, so?
Okay. And, uh, very similarly, um, here's a, a, a plan that's indicating, uh, what is called Parcel X. Uh, this is going to be, uh, donated, and this was also a requirement of the K Estates subdivision. Uh, this will, uh, be for general municipal purposes. Um, uh, one of the things is that because, uh, uh, this, this open land, uh, is in close proximity to additional open space, there's a six-foot strip that would, uh, allow for this Parcel X to connect to adjacent, uh, open space and really provide not only rec- uh, recreational, um, uh, connections to our o- through our open space areas, uh, but then also to provide for additional, um, uh, habitat and, um, uh, recreational purposes. So this is, uh, similar to, uh, the last article. This is something that was required uh, as part of the, the town's approval of this subdivision.
Now, the, the two, uh, subdivisions are pretty close together, uh, Joe. Is there, is there any possible connection between the two?
Uh, yes, if we, if you can visualize Parcel, uh, X right now, if I go back to,
Sure.
the Durkey Farms, you'll see that Parcel B directly abuts Parcel X within that K, uh, Estates. Uh, these developments, uh, uh, while they are separate subdivisions, uh, they essentially are, uh, different phases. Uh, and once you're in the subdivisions, you really can't tell where, where, uh, Durkey Estates is and where K Estates is. Uh, and that open space will allow for, uh, good connection between, uh, both, uh, uh, both areas that are going to be given to the town.
That's great. That's great. All right. Well, that brings us through the 20 articles that run the warrant. And, uh, as we said, some of them are, you know, rather ordinary and, and things we've seen before. And we'll see how Town Meeting wants to handle those, uh, articles, others, uh, like the Tohadoon Road property and, and some others, you know, there may be considerable interest in debating, uh, those. Uh, we'll go through the warrant, uh, as we, as we always do. Once again, we ask that, uh, normally when Town Meeting dissolves after the business is conducted, there's sort of a, uh, I wouldn't say mad rush to the exits, but in, in these times and the times of the pandemic, we ask that everyone remain seated, uh, until your, your section is dismissed by a Public Safety Officer. We did this in June and it worked out rather well. Uh, we asked that folks don't congregate, as is, you know, the custom, and, and chat with their neighbors, that, uh, people, you know, proceed in, in an orderly fashion to their vehicles and, and, uh, go home. Uh, you know, it's not very hospitable, I suppose, but it's necessary, uh, you know, under the, the times we live in now, and, and one day we'll be back to, uh, a more social aspect of, of Town Meeting, and we'll be back, uh, uh, in the K Gymnasium, uh, hopefully by spring. And hopefully, uh, uh, Joe, if I'm doing this, uh, with you in the future, we'll be doing it, uh, live in the studio and not via Zoom. But, uh, it's been a pleasure, uh, working with you this afternoon. And as always, I want to thank, uh, you know, Mark Corry and, and Kirby at, uh, LCTV, and they do a great job putting this on, uh, for us. And we hope that, uh, this is, will be useful to you at Town Meeting. Again, please bring your, your booklet with you to Town Meeting if you've got questions. So I know that, uh, the booklet and other information are available on the Town website, but, uh, you can always, I guess I'm inviting people to call the Town Administrator's Office, Joe, and ask any questions that they want, but, uh, sometimes it, it heads off, uh, more questions at Town Me. Folks can call me, uh, uh, at home as well. I'm listed in the book if they've got questions on uh, procedure or any other aspect of the, uh, meeting. I have to say, the planning that, uh, goes into the Town Meeting, once again, it's, it's been outstanding. I think, uh, the Town Clerk and LCTV and, and the Public Safety folks did a, you know, superb job in June and, and it, it looked very much the same now that, uh, we're going to have a good Town Meeting, do the town's business and, and, uh, move forward. So, uh, thank you for watching this this afternoon. Thank you again, Joe.
Thank you.
For joining me, and, uh, we'll see you hopefully at Town Meeting, Saturday, October 17th. Check-in starts at eight. Meeting starts at 9:00 AM. Thank you very much.